So let's go in about the tools and stop me at any time if you have any questions. These are some of the tools available. The statutes list a whole number of different tools. Gilbert's history, at least from what I'm aware of, is that most of the tools that are available, statutory tools to the city, Gilbert doesn't use and hasn't used historically in its redevelopment area, in the Heritage District area. There are a few that they have. One of the ones that they have is there's additional options and opportunities with contracting. So when Gilbert does sell property in the Heritage District, in a Heritage District, it's given authority to do certain things in those contracts that it wouldn't do in other areas or wouldn't be allowed to do if it's selling outside the Heritage District. Additional options, again, for real property, acquisition and disposition. And so here are some things or some ways that redevelopment area can be beneficial to the town and its residents. The first thing is the redevelopment plan. Again, it's a public process where the local residents, those that are live inside the redevelopment area and those outside as well, can provide input and comments. Here's the other things that can attract new development, it can stop conditions that are creating decline, encourage reinvestment, and the goal is, at the bottom there is improve the quality of life for residents and visitors. And a lot of the same things, what it means to be in an RDA if you're a property owner. I just want to highlight a couple of things. One, it's a 10-year designation. It's separate from the general plan. And it's kind of an overlay, so you could come in and you've got a general plan in place, like Gilbert just recently implemented its general plan. If the council were to decide to create another redevelopment area in Gilbert, it wouldn't conflict with the plan, it would just overlay on top of the plan. But again, it's a 10-year designation, which means the council has to redetermine and make that redetermination every 10 years. So it's not something that lasts in perpetuity. The properties are not recorded as being in a redevelopment area. So there's nothing on title for any property owner that says, oh yeah, this property has been designated redevelopment area and an obliterated area. That doesn't happen. There's nothing there for that. Again, one of the benefits is there are open houses, there's planning meetings, you've got the extra level of touchpoints for any project happening there because you have a redevelopment commission overseeing those kind of projects. And some additional things that could mean to property owners being in a redevelopment area, opportunities for citizen participation, more planning, partnership opportunities, new construction, improved fire protection, new infrastructure. And one of the goals would be, these new streets, new infrastructure, and a result of that could be increased property values. That's all I've got on the last slide's about giblets. But do we have any questions about redevelopment areas, how they're created, what they are, or how Gilbert has used them historically?
Any questions so far?
Yeah, I have one. Chris, did you say that the properties do get something recorded on their title or do not?
They do not. Yeah, there's nothing recorded on title about being in a redevelopment area.
I don't see any others, Chris, if you want to keep going.
Okay, we'll just have one more slide. And it's just talking about giblets. So it's the government property lease excise tax, giblet for short. This is another tool created by the state legislature that some cities have used. Gilbert has not, has never used a giblet, has never entered into a giblet deal. But just to go over this, it was a process, a tool that was created in 1996. The purpose, as laid out in the statute, is incentivize development in a redevelopment area and allows a tenant to pay an excise tax to a local government for up to 25 years at a different rate than what the normal tax rate would be. And so this project, sorry about this, for eligible projects in the designated central business district, you can actually have an eight-year abatement of the tax. Gilbert does not have a designated central business district. We've got our Heritage District, which is, we call the downtown district. But what, in order to get an abatement like that, the council would have to designate the Heritage District, or at least a portion of it, as a central business district. Otherwise, that tool would not be available. But practically speaking, in 1996, the rates were pretty favorable, and there were a lot of people entering into these giblets in different cities. But the legislature has changed the rates that are permissible. And nowadays, those rates, the benefit of getting a lower tax rate has really been undercut. If I'm a developer, I don't see a whole lot of benefit when it comes to that because you're paying about the same rate. Again, Gilbert's never done one. I don't know if anyone ever having plans to do one, but that's just what that's about. It's something that's available in a redevelopment area, but it's not, you don't necessarily need to do it. And of course, that would be a council touchpoint if anyone ever wanted to have that conversation.
Chris, could you provide an example of this being implemented?
Of a giblet?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so there've been a number of those in, I think, Phoenix, Tempe probably have used them the most. But they'll come in and basically the government, you know, I'm gonna, Dan, can you give an example? I know you have some experience in Tempe on those. I think Dan has worked on these.
Let's try that again. Good evening, Mayor and Council. To follow up on the question regarding examples of where communities have used a giblet or a government property lease excise tax, I think Tempe, Phoenix are a couple of great examples. They entered into some project, a couple of them certainly on Tempe Town Lake, there's been a couple of them in the City of Phoenix. They were in A, a redevelopment area, and B, an area that was also designated as a central business district. And the way they were able to, in essence, reduce their property tax, or in some cases, eliminate property taxes for eight years on some of those projects. And so oftentimes, in a situation like that, there are other jurisdictions, like the county, like the state, and perhaps some other local jurisdictions, like a community college district, or perhaps even a local school district, where payment in lieu of tax, so a pilot essentially was, a one-time check might have been written to those taxing jurisdictions in order to make that project and that taxing agency whole on that particular project. There's a number of examples on how they've been able to extend that to single occupiers and single users. But again, to Chris's earlier point, those sort of projects have never been done in Gilbert. If they were to ever even be contemplated, we would have to go through some additional sort of regulation in order to make that effective by creating a central business district. That would come before council in order to do that. And then in order to enter into a giblet agreement, that would obviously come before council. And then any provisions made through that development agreement that might reduce a property tax would again go before a council before being approved.
And I'll just add, one example is Tempe Marketplace.
Yes.
You know, that was, if you know the area, an industrial area forever, it got redeveloped. Tempe Marketplace is, I think there's 20 different giblets that Tempe had put in with the developers into that area. Basically, the whole thing's a bunch of giblets on that.
And the reason that that was used or otherwise implemented at the time was that particular site was literally a dump. And so there was some mention of some toxic waste or some waste that was leaching into the better part of the community. And so they just figured the best way to position that property and eliminate that environmental contamination was to work with the developer to get rid of that contamination and use a tool like a giblet in order to make the project work essentially.
Thank you. So tonight, this is just for information only. There's not any contemplation of implementing?
No, not at all. The reason why we're talking about giblets is at the retreat, there was mention of that, and we just want to make sure council understood what that is.
What's the process for the town to get a central business district designated? Is it similar to that of the redevelopment?
Yeah, it would be a resolution adopted by council to do so. I'd have to look at the statute, see exactly what it is, but it's very similar to that.
And anywhere in these redevelopment statutes, there's not any like safety valve for property owners to try to carve themselves out of it, or?
No, it's purely council-created, per resolutions, a council-created process. So the determination of what the area would be, then that's what it is.
And have there been any further discussions about, you know, applying for a central business district to kind of overlay those districts and take advantage of these other quote-unquote tools?
None that I'm aware of, Dan. No, none that, yeah.
Now's the time to discuss.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I have another additional question. Just, it was on a previous slide, you had excerpts from the statute that listed the criteria for what would qualify as a redevelopment area. And is there anything else in some of these sections that give any more clarity about? I mean, you could basically find one instance of all of those things in any area of the community. Is there, I guess, more direction given in any of these statutes to say, triggers any of these areas? Or, I know you said even one, it doesn't take all of these, it could be any number of these, and?
Let me get back to it. So it's a predominance is what the standard is, and the council has discretion determine what that means and what that is. But it's a predominance of any of these or some of these?
So is there a legal explanation or?
There really isn't, and I'm not aware of any case law that where a redevelopment area's been challenged, you know, the findings of a council's been challenged, saying, hey, there's not a predominance. So that's really been left in the discretion of the council to determine, okay, looking at the area that's being proposed and saying, does it meet the criteria, a predominance of any of these? You could focus on one, you could focus on multiple conditions or multiple of these elements.
And the reason why I ask that is twofold. I think in the presentations, we saw kind of a heat map of 311, you know, what had been submitted by residents. And so that was kind of like evenly distributed amongst the community. So I didn't see any, I guess, concentration in that area to make me think like, okay, this, I understand the, you know, the subsequent slides had examples of different parts of kind of that maybe six to 10-mile area, but we're talking about drawing whatever that map looks like, and then you could zoom in on any particular areas of that same particular map and perhaps not even find any of these things. And so I guess if there's no other additional statutory clarification of that, or maybe legal explanation that would give us more direction on how to follow that, it's really just kind of wherever we want to draw a map and?
It's drawing a map and making the determination that this is the area where the predominance of any or some of these or all of these are happening. And in that map, there may be, I mean, maybe there's a property or two or more, a neighborhood that doesn't quite fit, and maybe it should get carved out, or if it's completely surrounded, maybe it's more appropriate to keep it in, or create two different redevelopment areas.
Or based upon public testimony, this is, I prefer not to be in this designated area, that would be taken into consideration?
No, absolutely. Council has complete discretion on that.
And are there any other sections as far as detailing the public input process, or is that also left to the discretion of the council?
So there's what we talked about, there's those points. And then, I don't know, Dan or Amanda, if you want to talk about what the town has traditionally done, maybe with redevelopment plans? You know, there's a public process, I think we go, we allow for more public meetings than even what the statute does, but Amanda can speak to that.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. The statute requirements for the ARS state that we have to publicly notify a boundary discussion where we actually take to the community these findings of necessity. And so we go through each of them and talk about what we found through data. And then we also, as we go through the redevelopment plan process, we are required to hold a public meeting for the redevelopment plan and then to notify at the time of potential adoption for the redevelopment plan. That said, for the redevelopment plan that was adopted in 2018, we did about three years' worth of public outreach. Everything from, during the redevelopment plan process, we had a minimum of four public meetings. I don't recall off the top of my head, but that was just to generate the plan. But we also held meetings at the farmer's market, at the concerts, the downtown concert series. We had coffee hours at Bergy's that people could come and ask questions. So we really tried to do a thorough outreach process. And what we find is that this plan really isn't our plan. It's not staff's plan, it's the community's plan. And so we really need their input throughout this process on generating the area.
I just add one note, that they're under three, that third bullet point, that the statutory process before redevelopment area can be created, that, you know, we talk about public meetings and people are allowed to come, but notice has to be mailed to every property owner. Obviously, for council meetings, we publish notice. This is one where they're physically getting notice saying, a redevelopment area is being proposed, here's the information, link to the information on the website, here's the date of the public meeting to talk about that.
To follow up on that comment too, in order to do that, we would have to decide what that area looks like. So we'd have to decide if we were going to go with what was presented to us at the last, at the retreat this fall, or if we were looking at something different, then we'd have to decide those boundaries in order to know who to mail to.
Mayor, council members, we actually, we have the ability to mail to the larger boundary, which encompasses both. And intent would then be to go through both findings of necessity for both areas and really garner the input from the property owners through that process. But then they would be notified on that mailer that they would be in a potential or proposed redevelopment area under both of those boundary options.
Thank you. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. So Chris, a couple of years ago, the Goldwater Institute was successful at getting a case against a jurisdiction that was giving away some financial benefit to induce businesses to come to the town. Are you familiar with this?
There's been a number of lawsuits like that, so.
Yeah. So how is this giblet different? And by the way, I object to the acronym giblet. I feel silly saying it. It's very close to giblet, but anyway, how is this different?
So the challenge in the Peoria case was under, it was, there was a development agreement, and it didn't involve, I don't believe involved a giblet. It was a development agreement with Huntington University, if I remember right. And so the challenge was based on constitutional gift clause violations. So this process, the giblet process, and certainly redevelopment areas, not, it's a separate issue, it's a separate question. There've been plenty of giblets that have been challenged and successfully challenged over the years, most recently in Tempe and I believe Phoenix as well.
So they were challenged based on the criteria not being met, or challenged just by virtue of being a giblet?
I don't think, I don't know if the giblet statute has, the constitution has have been challenged. I think they're, the challenges are based on, you know, does that property actually qualify for giblet, or the rates, what they're supposed to be?
Okay.
But to my knowledge, the statute itself has never been challenged.
Thank you.
For somebody that doesn't like saying the word, you've said it an awful lot. I'm just going to point that out. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, there's like two groups of people, the ones who say giblets and the people who say g-lets. I refuse to be a giblet. It just sounds silly. Anyway, a part of your guys' study that you're doing on those two contemplated maps, can we perhaps include kind of an analysis of the property values in those areas? That to me seems like an area that would suggest if, you know, a designation like this would make sense in that geographic area compared to like, you know, the aggregate of the community as a whole? You know, if there's an area where we have depressed, you know, property values, that would be an indication of kind of all of these things at play? Is that part of kind of what you guys are doing research on?
So Mayor, Council, we are working through the findings of necessities. There's nine components of that finding of necessity. The property values is part of a larger data set. It's not a specific data set that we're looking at. If that's the direction of council is to look at property values as to whether they are recessed in comparison to the larger Gilbert area, we'd be happy to incorporate that into some of our data collection and data analysis. But it's not one of the nine findings, per se, that need to be necessitated in order to create a redevelopment area.
Yeah, I understand. I just think it would be kind of an objective litmus test for this body to say, there's enough of these, you know, qualifications at play that we're seeing a symptomatic, you know, result of that, which would be depressed property values. At least that makes sense to me as kind of an objective factor.
Certainly. If that's the direction of council, we would absolutely incorporate that data and analysis into the overall findings and necessities.
Thank you. Bridgette? So a couple of things. I do think the property tax evaluation would be enlightening, but I think we should look at it over the last 20 years and see what kind of fluctuations. Because to look at it in today's market, it may not be as reflective as maybe in the last 20 years of what's happening there. The other one is some crime statistics in that area compared to the rest of our community. I mentioned in the retreat that, you know, this is something I've been talking with people on the council for over 10 years about, that we have an aging area in our community that we've basically ignored because we are growing so fast and we're trying to put infrastructure and deal with all the growth, that this area has just been kind of left behind. I totally understand that there are some amazing residential properties in the middle of some of these areas, but then some of the outlying areas, I think, could use some help. Whether or not this is the correct way to do it, I think that's what we're here to talk about. But it's my understanding that Dan and his team have been looking at different opportunities to help an aging portion of our community be sustainable into the future. And when you look at what's happening in Mesa, I guess I'll just have to say Mesa and Chandler up in that area, even when you think about the Fiesta Mall, it used to be the place to go when it was happening, and you see some of those, that area in there, and it's deteriorating somewhat, and they're investing a lot of money to bring it back. Meanwhile, some of the crime statistics are moving this way and moving through that area of our community. And what we want to do is provide an environment that even in the older part of our community, it's a safe place to be and a place that will provide the quality of life that we provide the rest of our community. So I'm not, I don't know if this is the best way to do that, but in my mind, the redevelopment area provides tools. It does not provide additional burdens on the people there, requiring them to, let's say, fix their home or those, but it provides tools to help them do that and take care of some of what's happening in their neighborhood. We do have to address the business park up there. It was our jewel for a very long time. The market has shifted. We have buildings that don't park right, that, you know, we've got people parking on the streets, there's a lot of traffic issues. You have employees not too happy, you know, where they have to walk and things like that. But so however we move forward, whether it's redevelopment designation or not, I believe we need to take time and really address that area and not just keep kicking the can down the road for somebody else to deal with in the future. So I'm hoping that today we can answer a lot of questions and concerns that council may have, but also if there's other opportunities that isn't a redevelopment area, that we give some direction to maybe look into whatever that may be. Thank you.
Scott?
I think that what you're talking about is what started the whole discussion about the City of the Future initiative was that corridor up there. And I agree with everything you're saying. The question is, we do review, we review these designations every 10 years. Realistically, is there ever a time when we will not designate an area as a redevelopment area and it becomes more like a character area, something different, after we've invested a tremendous amount of money in the area?
Mayor, members of the council, absolutely. I think there's lots of examples nationwide where areas had been identified as a redevelopment area, a path was set forth in order to sort of remedy some of those findings of necessities. And over time, those areas began to stand on their own and be sort of market-driven opportunities in the future. And those communities have otherwise dropped that redevelopment designation and perhaps picked it up as a character area. There's, I can't think of any communities that have done that right off the top of my head, but I know that in doing sort of national research on redevelopment, we've seen a lot of situations in a lot of communities that have really put forth a plan to address slum and blight and other deteriorating factors, and have turned an area that was otherwise positioned for decline and created a very vibrant future for that corridor or for that particular geography within that community. If it's the desire of council for staff to bring back examples of communities that have done that, we would be happy to research that and bring that forward.
I'd like to hear about it because I just, I'm like you, I haven't heard of any place that has gotten rid of that designation. And I think it's important, even though it really doesn't affect people directly in those districts once they're designated, their perception is it is affecting them somehow, whether it's their property values or something else. They think they're concerned, even though that there's nothing that should be of concern with that designation. If after a period of time, we can get away from that designation, I think that would make them feel better.
Mayor, council, you bring up a very good point. And in fact, I'm reminded of a situation in Phoenix where they had multiple redevelopment areas and found conflicts with having multiple redevelopment areas in terms of what their potential, what their future, what the pathway to success looked like. And they ultimately consolidated, I think, what was it, six different? Eight different areas into one as a result. Now, that doesn't get to your point about completely eliminating the entire redevelopment area and redesignating it as a specific character area, but there's an example within our sort of local community of how redevelopment areas had begun to drop off. In this case, it went from eight to one. However, nationally, there might be some other study that we could bring forth that shows that the redevelopment designation was entirely forgotten and the path to, you know, market-driven success exists. And we'd be happy to do that research and bring that back to council.
Thank you.
Those eight that went down to one, did they each have their own redevelopment board in essence for each individual area?
Mayor, members of the council, we're not aware that they had individual groups. Speaking in Tempe, for example, with some experience, I know that in Tempe, there were a couple of redevelopment areas identified. They had separate boards, separate missions, separate objectives. And again, over time, they began to kind of marry into each other, if you will, and the goals and objectives become less about two separate areas and about one area. Now, in those examples, it didn't necessarily include an entertainment district like our Heritage District. However, I think you bring up an excellent point that, you know, if over time, we see the success of this area, perhaps dropping the designation of redevelopment begins to make sense because the area begins to stand on its own.
What are the top pros and cons for the businesses and residents within this area if designated into a redevelopment area?
Excellent question, Mayor. And members of the council, we'll tag team this, we'll sort of bring, I'll offer a couple of thoughts, and certainly Amanda will add some additional. From my standpoint, the general plan is that overarching guiding body that we really look to every 20 years as a community to adopt. There's tremendous rigor, public outreach that goes into the formation. There's tremendous rigor, public outreach that goes into the formation and the adoption of a general plan. And those general plans, I think, in our community have been very successful time and time again. One of the benefits that I see is the ability to treat the area different. So, as an example, when the Heritage District was established as a redevelopment area, one of the things that we did in that area by way of treating it different is created the ability to go zero lot lines and build up tier lot lines. Subsequently, what came following that was the ability to embrace a shared parking model or a shared parking concept, which governs the district today. Another example in the Heritage District, for a long time, that was the one and only area in all of Gilbert where you could have, for example, neon signage. For me and from my point of view, those situations and examples have created situations, almost a pilot-like effect, where neon in the Heritage District became so successful and so sort of known for its clever and use of neon signs, that we began to roll that out throughout the entire town. We saw the community, the business community, the Chamber of Commerce and others begin to embrace the fact that a neon sign is just not for the Heritage District, but rather for all of Gilbert. And so, from my standpoint, the ability to treat someplace different for a specific period of time to embrace a pilot-like effect, to be able to understand if the intended consequences are creating benefit or the intended consequences create unintended consequences that create different sets of burdens that weren't anticipated, it's a wonderful way to deploy things like pilots as a way to understand if this policy works in this area, could it work townwide? And so, for me, the redevelopment areas have created situations where a pilot-like effect can create situations that bring positive, as well as, in some cases, negative outcomes. Those negative outcomes, we often characterize in our City of the Future as this fail fast, fail quickly, and then iterate, evolve, and sort of continue to evolve. In situations like that, I think that that's where a benefit of a redevelopment area could bring very tangible impacts to Gilbert, where we could use the redevelopment area as an area to run pilot policies, to see if they work, learn about the intended consequences, as well as some of the unintended consequences, and use policy to remedy those kind of situations. Those are just a couple of examples that come to my mind, mayor. Amanda, I'm sure you have others, please.
Thank you, Dan. Some of the pros that come to my mind, certainly public involvement. I'll share even just with our November council retreat, after individuals had seen that, we had people reaching out to our staff. Sydney, who's on our staff, and I have already begun to meet with some of the citizens who have shared with us the challenges that they're encountering in the area. So, that's really insightful. And again, this is the public's plan in the area. Additionally, the redevelopment plan really creates a continuity of vision. So, in the time that we've had four redevelopment plans for the Heritage District, we have benefited from the input of nine mayors throughout that time, but the vision has carried. So, as mayor and council changes, those goals and tactics that help revitalize an area are carried through and as staff changes as well. So, we see that as a benefit. In regards to the cons, I think the biggest concern we have is how long does this take? Can it happen now? And the reality is, it takes really strategic vision and planning and outlining those goals and tactics in order for us to achieve revitalization. So, people often want to see those results immediately, and it does take time. We often uncover issues that we didn't even know were issues, as Sydney and I have already experienced through some of these conversations. And what that does is it does help us outline those goals, but it can also be a burden to staff in the sense that we are lean staff. So, we have to be really strategic about how we're proceeding and achieving those goals and how we're working towards those tactics.
Thank you. Trying to remember back to the retreat, and that was November, so that seems like a long time ago at this point. Did we discuss whether or not this redevelopment commission that we currently have would be over the full area if we expanded the area? Did we get into that detail?
Mayor, members of council, I think we briefly discussed what role a public body might serve in the oversight of a new redevelopment area. There, to my knowledge, was not any clear pathway or suggestion from council that we shall proceed in X way or Y way. I think part of our due diligence and part of our public outreach would be to learn from that very thought process. Does a separate area that's not an entertainment district, that isn't sort of a food destination, but perhaps a live, work, and play destination, require a different board-level oversight to bring forward movement, forward progress, revitalization to the area? So, candidly, mayor, I think it's undecided at this point, and ultimately, a decision for council to direct staff in what direction they would like to see oversight from any kind of a board, existing or new.
Just one, thank you. One other thought on that, it is a requirement of the redevelopment plan to identify whether or not we will have a redevelopment commission and then what its role is. So, in the Heritage District today, our redevelopment commission serves as a design review board, but the design guidelines weren't put in place until the 90s. So, as, yep, late 90s. So, as you look at from 1989 until the late 90s, when those design guidelines came in place, the redevelopment commission was really acting more as a steering committee and helping develop and work towards those goals.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thanks, mayor.
I think my comment should probably, or question should be directed more at Chris, but thank you for the information you guys have provided. I know the first statute that you laid out, which really is kind of the legislative findings, you had put maybe just an excerpt in there. And I wanted to, and I don't think it's, I don't know if you have that slide, 1472 through 3614. There it is. Yeah, so you had just taken a couple of the provisions. I know, I wanted to know if you could give us any clarity on number four paragraph in that one? And maybe without having to pull it up, I'll just maybe catch it this way. There's qualifications for how governments can utilize their eminent domain authority. Does this designation broaden in any way those authorities? So, basically, if you've designated an area for this, that triggers kind of an additional way in which, or a broader way in which government can exercise that authority? And I would point to that fourth paragraph as maybe why I would be reading it that way.
Give me just a minute.
I'm making you do lawyering on the fly.
Yeah, and that's where we get in trouble here.
And I know, because part of the preliminary introduction to this issue was kind of, slum and blight is a harsh verbiage, but the statute itself does not necessarily back up maybe that use of diction. But reading through this kind of declarations and findings section, it was contrary to that conclusion to me. Usually, when they, when their first finding, that there exists municipalities of the state, some are blighted areas which constitutes a serious and growing menace, injurious, and I actually don't actually know how to pronounce the same word, inimical, to the public health, safety, and morals and welfare of the residents of the state. But then, you had pointed out the third paragraph, which, again, we already have kind of awesome regulatory authorities, and so this is saying, basically broadening that, and then the fourth, specifically to eminent domain.
So, there's a section 1478 that specifically talks about, so 361478 that specifically talks about eminent domain and what a municipality's authority would be in a redevelopment area with regard to redevelopment or eminent domain. And what it says is that the municipality may acquire by condemnation real property that it deems necessary for in connection with a redevelopment project under the article. So, it does give additional authority to a city that it wouldn't have outside a redevelopment area. To my knowledge, Gilbert has never exercised that. I'm not sure if other cities have. In Arizona, I know there's a number of Supreme Court cases under different statutes in different states where property was taken for economic development purposes or redevelopment purposes. I don't know if there's any in Arizona, but to my knowledge, Gilbert's never attempted that in the Heritage District.
And I just bring that up because we got the slide on the benefits of this, and then the mayor asked a question to kind of compare and contrast that, and we've got a partial answer to that, but there is, I don't want us to kind of gloss over that area because that should be maybe like, I don't know, in red and bold, so that people know exactly, you know, correct, and as a way of public education as well. And so, I just bring that up because it's going to come up in this public process, and we should be fully aware. And I don't know if, even though we haven't used it historically, perhaps in our resolution, if this continues to gain support and is ultimately voted on by this body, perhaps there's a way we can confine our own authority if that's not the intention. Yeah, more specificity in the tools. We keep saying, we're going to have all these tools at our disposal. Well, maybe as a body, we can define what we want that policy to look like, so that, one, we can point to that as, to our teams, to their point, depending, no matter who's sitting in these seats or who's kind of in the staff, that that's in black and white for people to refer back to as this was the intention, and these were the tools that we were going to. We can point that in our public hearings and say, look, this isn't the intention of the body to exercise kind of this awesome power outside of what we would normally use it for, which would be for strictly government purposes, and we know how those can be defined for a public good. But that's just some thought and input.
And I would just add, mayor, if I could, in that same section, there are a couple checks built in to the ability of a council to exercise condemnation authority for economic development purposes. In subsection B, it says, before municipality may initiate a condemnation action under this article, has to make a good faith effort to negotiate for the purchase of the property. And then if it determines it cannot acquire the property without condemnation, you have to notify the property owner of the public meeting where that actual decision would be made. And then it also says that the governing body must authorize by a two-thirds vote, so not just a simple normal majority that would have. So, there are some checks, but to Vice Mayor's point, I don't, one concern, if you were to designate an area redevelopment area, a council can't tie the hands of a future council, but there's certainly nothing wrong with including things in the whereas provisions, the intent, the policy is to make it clear that the council, in creating this area, this is what's envisioned.
Yeah, I like that opportunity to be able to do that. It's almost like giving ourselves our own stipulations on how we're going to see this moving forward. So many times, and we've seen it as a council, that people come forward and say, but this is what we understood from the council meeting eight years ago, 10 years ago, whatever, fill in the blank, but it's not in whatever was written up officially. It might be in the minutes, it might have been discussed, but it's not written up officially. So, if we can find a way to create a situation where we can provide the tools that we want to provide without these situations that might be a negative for our residents and business owners. Because you're right, the cons are, I think, just as important as the pros. We need to know everything that's possible. And from the town's perspective, my next question was going to be, what are the pros and cons from the town's perspective? But I think you answered those, even with the answers that you gave me already, as to how we could use this as a tool for the community in that area and then potentially use this for the tool in the future. The one thing that I really liked was that the 10 years creates a consistency, and then at the end of that 10 years, we come back and reevaluate, because it most likely isn't going to be any of us, right? Any other questions, comments? Amy?
One more comment, and then I'll sideline myself. Yeah, I just, I think that might be important, because as we have kind of a vision for what we want this plan to develop into, and we see kind of what that area could be and its potential and all the great benefits, there's always kind of the downside to it as far as the ability to trample on people's property rights. And we've seen that even in areas where they've done major transit projects, and they're saying, or even G-Plits, where they say this is going to benefit the area because it's going to create all this economic development. And that's really great for everybody who lives there five years from now, but in the meantime, the person who got their property taken doesn't see the benefit of that. So, there's those trade-offs, and then oftentimes, those create gentrification results that people who, maybe they enjoyed their blighted area, to kind of pivot and be flexible, and then we can respond to it, and then we know if it's, there's pros or cons to the policies implementation. And in my mind, I was like, well, you're describing a free market, where you literally have the ability of all these agents to fail very quickly and know almost immediately if things are working or not. And so, I would say if we have policies like that, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, and let's maybe think about being more creative. And there's other areas in the country that provide different planning models that might be an example of that. So, those would be the kinds of things that I would suggest, but they're way broader than, I would say, kind of slopping a designation on something and doing something specific targeted to that area. It would be more holistic in general that I think every business and community and area of the town would benefit from. So, I like things that are kind of equitably taken advantage of.
Well, and Kathy, you had said, if there are other options besides a redevelopment area, right, when you made your first statement earlier? So, I don't know if there are other options to create these pilot program situations in an area of Gilbert specifically. I don't know what else exists out there, if anything, besides a redevelopment area. So, I guess that would be a good question to have answered. And you guys may know. I don't know, Amanda, you may know. Nothing that you know of, just redevelopment area. I would be open to taking the next step, which would be doing some public outreach to see the response that we get from the area, the Northwest Corridor, the Heritage District area, and the areas that you're looking at reaching out to that could potentially encompass this larger area on the map that you showed us. I think we need more information still.
I agree with that from the perspective, is that we really want to hear from the people. And if the concerns that you're mentioning, Amy, are what comes out very loud and clear, then we have a clear direction from the people who are going to be impacted by it. But I think we'll also learn from them what their priorities are, and perhaps they're not the same as ours, and maybe they'll identify the tools that would help them if they need help. So, I would like to move to the next step, which is public outreach and just get feedback from that.
Mayor, I agree. Amanda said something that many times when they've done these in the past, they've discovered things that they didn't know, problems that existed they weren't aware of, and I think hearing from the public is a great way to discover more. I'm open to looking at other alternatives, understanding that my bottom line is, I want to prevent that area from deteriorating, which is the normal life cycle of most urban areas, is they will deteriorate over time. And whatever tool we can use to prevent that, I'm all for it, whether it's a redevelopment district or something else that Vice Mayor's talking about. Somehow, we prevent that from happening.
And our hands get a little tied when you can't do incentives and things like that for areas or for businesses specifically, so we have to be creative as we're looking at these options. But I think we need to hear what people need and people want. And I love that Amanda said that. Scott, thanks for pointing that out. Young, do you have a comment?
I just want to say that I do support a redevelopment area and the public engagement associated with that, especially for the Northwest area, because I lived in that area for many years. And just what Scott Anderson said was that I want to prevent any deterioration and make sure that we're able to provide the investments that will keep that area as desirable as other areas of Gilbert.
Any final comments, Chris?
No, other than, we had a small discussion about government property lease excise tax. However, we want that to go.
G-Plit.
Yeah, I want to make it clear, this is not something that, there's been a discussion on the staff end, no recommendation whatsoever. Brought it up as an FYI, it's not something that I've heard the town is considered or considering or ever would.
I had never heard it before, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor brought it up at the retreat, so it wasn't anything that I ever heard discussed by anybody up until that point. Any final comments, Diane, Amanda? Oh, Patrick?
Mayor, if I could add, you know, in regards to eminent domain for economic development purposes, it's not even a conversation staff has ever had nor ever would have. That's not a path that we think is appropriate for use in the community for the things we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you for that follow-up. Any other comments? No? Good. Did you get some direction from us? We're not allowed to vote on anything.
Mayor, members of the council, we do give direction. We understand the, the power to, through public engagement and public involvement and that feedback that comes through the engagement committee brings the data and the information that allows council to make a informed decision. And if you're interested in what that direction looks like, staff is ready to initiate that public outreach. And if you have questions or any comments, we've got a number of resources that we're prepared to position to. If you have questions, if you're interested, should be issues, concerns, people want to know more about what redevelopment is, we would, we would land images and others for useful information. There will be a lot of, you know, designated redevelopment, what a basis is, that concerns that community resource for people to be able to use, as well as identify what that communications plan begins to look like with an intent to refer this back to council in this this year.
Great, thank you. I think part of that discussion also needs to be, how do we handle this with the redevelopment commission? Do we keep just one redevelopment commission? If we're going to keep one, I might suggest expanding it from five members to seven members. That might be a little more helpful and maybe expand the members and the type of members that we choose for that commission might be a possibility. So just a couple of thoughts that went through my mind as you were talking about what we're looking at. I think for staff's perspective and ease of making things run, one, development commission might be easier than two. One for the Heritage District, one for the overall district. So that might be something to think about too as we're moving forward and asking the public about that too. Any final comments? That's it?
I might also ask Chris to give us clarity on 361488 as well, which in addition to other powers set forth in this article, levy taxes and current deadness and issue bonds. So specifically, you know, is tax increment financing or other kinds of, different kinds of taxes we could levy that would be specific to this area? So that might be something else that we want more.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks very much for the presentation. That's the only item that we had on our study session, so I will go ahead and adjourn the study session. Thank you.